... January 17, 2019 to order at 6:01. Commissioner, how's your last name?
Blochtek.
Blochtek. Commissioner Blochtek, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I will. Everybody stand, put your right hand over your heart and say with pride, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blochtek?
Here.
Commissioner Eglin?
Here.
Commissioner Sarkia is absent. Vice Chair Hammel?
Here.
Chair Heady?
Here. Reorganizing the agenda, I'd like to submit that we have the one item of business, the preliminary review of Highway 246 at Avenue Flags Commercial Project be moved to the very back of the thing because I have to recuse myself. Is that okay with everybody? Instead of voiced?
Yes.
Yes.
So, somebody want to second that data?
No vote. You don't need a vote.
Okay. Don't need a vote?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I guess that takes us to the written communications?
Minutes.
Oh, excuse me. Approval of minutes of the January 3.
Like the motion that we approved the minutes.
I seconded it.
Go ahead. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public comments, there are no consent calendar, there is none, continued public hearing, written communication, any planning commissioner comments. I'd just like to welcome our new member. Glad to see you.
Thank you.
And hopefully you'll enjoy your time here.
Looking forward to it.
Great. And then the planning, anybody else?
No.
The planning director report.
Good evening, Chair Heady and commissioners. I would also like to second Dan, Commissioner Heady's comments and welcome Mike Eglin to the planning commission. I also hope you enjoy your time here. We've got lots of exciting projects coming up.
Yes.
So, to move on here, just wanted to update you. The city council did approve the Central Homes project with all of the conditions. So, you know, the applicant will be required to submit plans with all of the corrections as listed in the resolution.
Just as a note, have, do you think, or have they shown any progress? I know they're supposed to do it all together, but have you had any communication with them?
I have not had any communication with them since the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
The second is the discussion and reopening of the public hearing for the Cambrian Boutique Hotel project is going to be on February 7th. So, that will be at the next meeting.
Okay.
The next meeting that we'll meet. So, since there's a fifth Thursday in this month, the next planning commission meeting will be the 7th.
Okay.
And other than that, we've just got the Arco Gas Station on the northern end of the Avenue of Flags as well as the 518 Avenue of Flags Mixed Juice Project. We're expecting resumils of both of those projects. So, you know, hopefully we'll have them ready for public hearing in the near future, but we just need to get the resumils back and analyze the plans at that point. And that's all I've got.
Any questions? Okay. Now, we come to the other business, a preliminary view of Highway 246 at Avenue Flags Commercial Project. And we think that's all right. Yeah? So, it's a new public hearing, or no, it's a preliminary view. And I will have to recuse myself because of the ownership of property near, within 500 feet of the property. Can I turn it over to you?
Thank you. Do I need to scoot over or should I?
No, you're fine.
You're cool.
Thank you, staff.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Dan. Have a good night.
At least it's not wet.
That's right.
Well, thanks. I should have walked over here. You never know.
Okay. So, then, do I turn it over to Irma?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Hammel and members of the planning commission. I'm going to be making a presentation tonight on the Highway 246 at Avenue of Flags Commercial Project. We received an application for final development plan and, whoops. There we go. Received an application for a final development plan for development of two one-story commercial buildings with patios and parking and a lot line adjustment to realign the property, one of the property lines between two of the existing five parcels. And this is being done to allow for each of the buildings to be situated on a discrete parcel. The total number of lots and acreage will remain the same. The property owner is Glenn Hartman and the applicant agent for the owner is Daphne Romani of Solievo Architects and she is in the audience tonight. These two maps show the general location of the project. The vicinity map outlines the project and shows the five parcels that are, currently exist on the property. I've also included the Avenue of Flags specific plan, just to put it into context of where the property is located and it's located on Opportunity Site 10, which is a much larger piece that we had included in the specific plan and has potential for redevelopment. This project is proposing to utilize only a few of those parcels. The site is approximately 1.9 acres. There are three existing commercial buildings on the site currently, one of which is the former Trace Rosa's Restaurant. And these existing buildings are proposed to be demolished. And a good majority of the site is vacant. I'm going to get this great laser and I can make a, use it to point. So, the existing buildings are located right along here and the rest of the site is predominantly vacant and this is being used for some parking down here. Zaka Creek does run along the lower edge of the site here and it goes into culverts approximately Flying Flags is down here. It's a vacant lot over here to the east beyond which is the Shell Gas Station and then sideways in is down here. The Avenue of Flags is right here and P. Sue Anderson's is to the north, right here. The land use for this property is general commercial. The zoning for the property is general commercial specific plan. And the Avenue of Flags specific plan was adopted on October 2017, as I previously mentioned, for this property. There's also a AHOS designation, well, actually, it's an overlay on this property. The AHOS description for this particular site says that priority is given to commercial development over residential at this particular location. And because this is a commercial development, the AHOS would not be applicable to the proposed use. The height limit for this property is 35 feet. Parking requirements for the proposed uses, being commercial and restaurant, there's one space required per 300 square feet of commercial uses, which include the restaurant and the outdoor seating area and one space per two employees. Architectural character required is Art Deco per the specific plan. And this area being that it's under the specific plan and also because it's an infill development is exempt from environmental review. Oh, last but not least, the property, this map does show that the property is located, portion of the property is located within the 100-year flood zone, which is designated by this diagonal hatching here. The proposed uses that are being shown for the site, so there's two buildings. Building one has one restaurant and four retail slash tasting rooms proposed and building two has four retail slash tasting rooms proposed for a total of 10,529 square feet. Outdoor seating, a permanent outdoor seating is shown on the patios for a little over 6,000 square feet. And I may point out here that the outdoor seating, the permanent outdoor seating does count towards the parking requirement. Amenities include landscape courtyard plaza areas, bocce ball court, decorative hardscape, pedestrian pathways and views of the Zaka Creek corridor.
Irma, can you back up a minute on that counts toward parking requirement? So, there has to be so many spaces for the permanent seating? Is that what?
Correct. Anytime there's permanent outdoor seating used for restaurant or other type of uses where they will have patrons permanently seated.
Okay.
It does count towards the parking requirement. So, one per 300 square feet would be applied in this case.
Okay. Got it. Thanks.
Okay. So, the building footprint is 10,529 square feet, same as the building area square footage. Given that it's a one-story building, it's roughly 13% of the parcel area. The building heights vary from 17 feet to 23 feet with the architectural features reaching 25 feet. And as previously mentioned, 35 feet is allowed in this area. So, it's compliant with the height requirement. A total of 73 parking spaces are proposed with 61 being required. This includes three handicap spaces being provided plus one loading zone. Bicycle racks will also need to be provided and will need to be shown on the plans. And the 61 number of spaces required is asterisk because this may change. At the present time, no tenants have been identified and the number of employees are just an estimate. So, if there's any additional employees, this requirement may change. But they are showing 12 more spaces than the minimum required. So, they should be able to accommodate that. The setbacks, and I'll point this out in the next slide, which is the map of the area, but the setbacks vary on the front, which is along Highway 246. It varies from 6 feet to 29 feet and the buildings are set at street grade. So, they are pedestrian friendly. The rear setbacks are 100 to 200 feet running along the contour of Zaka Creek. The side, this will come up later also as a comment, but the top of bank and the 50-foot creek setback from Zaka Creek will need to be shown on all of the plans. Besides setbacks, there's 10 feet on the east with the vacant land beyond, that's towards the Shell Station. And on the west side, it's a 48-foot setback from the property line. And I will point out a situation here that it's really 3 feet from an existing retaining wall with a vacant parcel in between the retaining wall and the property line that we are asking the applicant to clarify what the proposed use will be for that parcel. At the current time, it's used for, used to park used cars, that overflow parking for the used car lot that's on the corner. So, I will just point to the parcel that I was just mentioning, which is the lot that's being used for overflow used car sales parking because this is part of the property that's being applied for, under this application, they will, will need to indicate what's being proposed there or if they intend to leave it vacant. So, this is the existing site plan. The buildings that I mentioned that are on the property are, this is the former Trace Rosa's building and there's small buildings existing on the property, which are all proposed for demolition. This is the existing Ellen's Restaurant, the Coast Auto Used Car Sales, parking for Ellen's Restaurant. And one of the comments that we have on the plans is they really need to clearly delineate what's part and not part of the proposed project. This parking lot, this parcel actually is, appears to be part of the parking that they're proposing along this entire lot here, which is part of the property. And there's another sliver of a lot shown here and that really is part of this property up here. So, this line is not really an operative property line. Flying Flags is down here with an adjacent structure that needs to be labeled just to show what that is.
Do we know where ingress and egress is on, is it on 246 and Avenue Flags?
Yes, and I'll show you that a little bit more later, but I can also point that out right now. Access is being proposed along this existing driveway.
Okay.
And there's through traffic and there's a site plan later that's going to show this a little bit more clearly, but basically there's other access proposed right here with a new driveway along Avenue Flags. And here we go, more clearly shown. This is the prior site plan. A new restaurant that four tasting rooms slash retail uses here and additional four tasting rooms slash retail here. Access is here, parking is along this access and new driveway is right here. I would also like to point out this irregular front lot line here. This is actually part of the right-of-way for Highway 246. It's under Caltrans jurisdiction. So, they will need to seek an encroachment permit from Caltrans for use of that property and get those plans approved. The architectural design is generally compliant with Art Deco. Our contract architect has completed the design review on this and there are elements that need to be just further developed and detailed, descriptions of the Art Deco detailing. This includes all the buildings and other items such as the trellises. The trash enclosure will also need to be Art Deco compliant and the fencing needs to be described more clearly. There were comments the architect made on building massing in articulation, asking for greater variation in the wall planes, facade step backs, perhaps some vertical articulation with some tower elements more accentuated. Other comments include consideration of an alternate color schemes as the one provided is quite neutral. There is a color board. This is the north elevation along Highway 246. So, this is the tasting rooms. These are, well, this is the facade of the tasting rooms and then this is the facade of the proposed restaurant. And we appreciate that the project architect incorporated to some degree the facade elements of Trace Rosa's. So, it's nice to have some of that captured. And this is the south, this is the south elevation for building number one, which is the elevation that would be seen from the parking lot. And these are the west and east elevations. These are the elevations for building number two. Again, this is along Highway 246, the north elevation, south elevation seen from the rear of the building and the west and east elevations. I would just like to go back a little bit to the, oops, to the site plan and just point out that this building was placed at an angle here because there's the, this irregular lot line here owing to the Caltrans right-of-way. So, it was placed in an angle here. And there could be some opportunity to include some more vertical elements at the, at the edge of this building just because it's a very prominent view along Highway 246. Now, this is a, this is an image of the color and material boards. Again, the design review comments indicated that they would like to see consideration of some more variation in the colors. The color scheme was quite neutral and Art Deco did have variations in color, that whole design style. So, we'd like them to consider that. Floor plans were submitted. This is for building one with the restaurant building here, the tasting rooms here, the tasting rooms here. It appears, and we would encourage this to be the case, that entrances are provided along Highway 246 to both buildings. And a path, access pathway is provided through the Caltrans property and some landscaping here with front landscaping provided. They'll show up a little bit more in the landscape plans. The lighting plan provided did show pole lighting throughout the parking lot. And these were the wall sconces that the city architect indicated could be more Art Deco compliant. So, there's a blade light shown here for the restaurant. It didn't really have a lot of detail to evaluate what that would look like. So, we're asking that there be more detail and that Art Deco styling be considered for the wall sconces. This was the sign summary that was submitted and they're showing the neon lighting for this, these types of signage along the front, which is along Highway 246. Some of the drawings and the plans did show signage on the back of the buildings and it wasn't clear what that, what type of signage was being proposed there. So, the master sign program would cover those types of details. So, getting to a description of the landscape plan, there's approximately 13,216 square foot proposed, which is about 16% of the parcel area. And consistency with the site plan is required in this case as some of the items shown on the landscape plan were different than what's being shown on the site plans. Approximately six mature trees are proposed to be removed, however, none of these fall under the native tree protection ordinance. Approximately 22 new trees are being proposed and we'd like to see the types of trees at their locations either labeled or keyed to a let. This work would need to be coordinated with the regulatory agencies such as the Department of Fish and Game. Because the Zaka Creek corridor is also a flood control channel, the Water Quality Control Board would also be involved. Hardscape areas are also shown on the landscape plans and we'd like to see calculations for this. Hardscape areas include decorative paving, pedestrian pathways and recreation areas, which include the bocce ball court. So, going to the landscape plan, just showing these areas. The additional street tree would be recommended at this location. They are showing trees which would qualify as street trees at this particular location. So, we feel that additional street tree is recommended here. And landscaping is shown along the property lines at the edges of the parking areas as required by our code. It appears, and this is why we'd like this clarified, that these are the new trees being proposed and that these are existing trees to be retained. There are existing trees to be removed shown on this plan. Some of them don't coincide with what's being shown on the site plan. So, we'd just like to see that all the plans are consistent internally. And finally, this is a comment I made earlier and it's going to come up again, but this is a good plan to point this out on. So, Zaka Creek runs right here and the top of bank needs to be delineated here to show how this may impact the drive aisles that are being proposed. So, Zaka Creek runs in here. Right here, there is a head wall, concrete head wall with several culverts and Zaka Creek flows underneath the property at this location. So, because the drive aisles are being proposed at such a close proximity to this head wall, we'd like to see additional design details for that. This is, oops, included as part of the public works comments, but I wanted to point it out here because it's really, you can see very clearly where that location is. So, project access, as I mentioned earlier, is, the main access is along Highway 246 using an existing driveway. There are three additional driveways along Highway 246, which will need to be closed. And these are within the Caltrans right-of-way. So, as a result, Caltrans encroachment permit and improvement plans will need to be prepared for that. Secondary access is via a new driveway proposed along Avenue of Flags. And then driveway plans for this do need to be shown. They can be shown on the grading plans. They don't need to have a separate improvement plan for that. Pedestrian access, I just would like to clarify, I'm asking for clarification from the applicant, but it appears that there's both front and rear access provided to the buildings, which we will require. And the landscape plan shows a pathway to, let me point this out, to Flying Flags right here, the property is down here. That is not shown on the site plans nor the grading plan. So, we need to know which plans govern and they all need to be consistent. And I've already mentioned that there will be potential impacts as the Zaka Creek corridor itself and the flood control structures and this process too, with the regulatory agencies need to be followed here. Also, as previously mentioned, the portion of the property is within the 100-year flood zone. So, grading for the building pad will be required so that it, so that the building pad will be in compliance with the flood plain ordinance and any other requirements. And this is the grading plan. It's not quite as clear. There's a lot of, there's a lot of lines going on on this plan. It does have a lot of detail. It does have similar dimensions that are required. We ask that this be clarified a little bit to clearly show what is part of the project and what is not part of the project, maybe to set it off with clear line delineation. And the driveways that are, need to be closed are, are shown up here. They need to be viewed very closely, but it has a lot of detail. It just needs some clarification. The lot line adjustment is being requested to realign the property line between two of the existing parcels, which I'll point out in a minute on the, on the map. The purpose of the lot line adjustment is to allow each of the buildings to be on a discrete parcel. The total number of lots and acreage remain the same. And again, clarification of this map is needed and I'll point it out in a moment. I'd like to mention at this point that additional reports and technical studies were submitted and these include the Zaka Creek high water calculations, a geotechnical investigation, face wet environmental site assessment, a stormwater control plan and a title report. So, these are all on file at the planning department. So, this is the lot line adjustment map. The line that's being moved is this line. It currently runs this way and they're proposing to move it to here. So, this would allow the buildings, and this really does need to show existing versus proposed lots. It needs to show the proposed buildings so we can clearly see where the lot lines will fall in relation to the buildings. This particular map asked them that it only shows the existing buildings. So, there is work needed to be done on this map as well. And it also needs to clearly show what is part and what is not a part of the project. I will quickly run through these comments. They were more thoroughly delineated in your staff report. Comments on the site and architectural plans is that overall, the plans need to be internally consistent with one another and fully dimensioned. Some of the calculations that we did and interpretations were done using takeoffs on the, on the existing plans or the proposed plans that were submitted. So, they do need to show the dimensions. This is particularly important along the Highway 246 frontage. And I already mentioned the top of bank needs to be shown from Zaka Creek. There's a 50-foot setback required from Zaka Creek. Drive aisles and parking are allowed within this 50-foot setback. And I previously did mention that a 10-foot buffer landscape area would be required. The site plan does need to show the dimension, parking spaces and the drive aisles and the flow of pedestrian vehicular circulation indicated by arrows, bicycle storage, all the- the, any proposed walls and fences. And also, they are showing a loading zone, and we're asking for clarification on how the items that are being delivered from the loading area would be able to access the buildings, as there are some great differentials and pathways to be navigated. Master sign program, I've already talked about. We will require fully dimensioned color elevations of all sides of the proposed buildings. This is for the, this will be required for the public hearing. And the building heights will need to be shown from average finished grade. Color renderings will be required that will be consistent with the elevations. The applicant did provide a rendering that was included on the cover sheet of the full-size plans, and we will need something of this, this quality, showing everything in full-size submitted as part of the resubmital. The trash and cycle area plans need to be submitted to Marboard for review, and any design considerations shall be incorporated into the revised plans. And of course, any comments from the staff report and from the planning commission will need to be in the revised plans. And I've mentioned some of these already. The landscape plan needs to be revised to be consistent with the site plans, the additional street tree, the top of bank for Zaca Creek, the buffer area along the Zaca Creek footage, identify any creek restoration, providing information on the suitability of trees, not in the approved list, hardscape calculations. The landscape plans do need to include a statement about the model water efficiency landscape ordinance, and the exterior lighting that we've covered already. Public works comments. A current title report will be needed. That's dated within six months of the submittal. What was included in the application was dated from 2017. The plans will need to show all existing and proposed easements with dimensions. Again, proposed street and sidewalk improvements need to be included. The Caltrans encroachment permit package will need to be submitted to us as well as to Caltrans. Additional information is going to be needed for the flood mapping on this, and this is kind of a technical comment here, but we encourage the applicant to come back in and sit down and meet with the public works director to flesh out the details for this. The grading plans will need to delineate limits of construction, which was not clearly shown, and include topography for fifty feet off-site. There are existing sewer and water mains which run through the site or are in the vicinity of the project, and locations for this need to be shown to ensure that no conflict is, will be evident with the proposed improvements. And similarly, as I mentioned, the design details for the drive aisle, especially at the flood control culverts, will be needed to ensure that there is no conflict with that structure. Comments from Department of Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife will be required. One-foot contour topography on the grading plans will be required, and again, top of bank for Zaca Creek. Identify any onsite drainage facilities and show proposed utility line connections and proposed fire hydrants. Lot line adjustment map will need to clearly delineate existing versus proposed property lines and initial versus final lots proposed. And I encourage the applicant to review the lot line adjustment application checklist, as there are some items requested on that that are not provided, and just, these are just clarification and details. Comments were received from the Santa Barbara County Fire Department and the Building Department, and these will be provided to the applicant and any applicable items taken into consideration at this point on the revised plans. Most of the Building Department plans will become operative at the, sorry, most of the Building Department comments will become operative at the time the building plans are prepared, but some of them may impact the design of the project. The Fire Department had some comments on cross-property easements and access and just general width of the drive aisles. It didn't look like that was going to be an issue for the applicant. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any comments, or any questions that the planning commission may have at this point. And I would like to mention that Daphne Romani is available, is the project applicant, and she has indicated that she has a few comments that she would like to make on the project as well, so.
And has the applicant been provided with all this lengthy list of staff comments and requirements from our package?
Yes, they have received the staff report.
Okay.
So they've received everything, the entire agenda packet that was provided to the planning commission. And our typical process is that we take the comments in the staff report and the planning commission comments, turn them into an incomplete letter, and provide that to the applicant, and that will be ready tomorrow. And we will provide the complete comments from the Fire Department and the Building Department as well. I did not provide them for the planning commission at this point. They weren't significant enough to impact the plans. Otherwise, I would have indicated some of the comments, but you know.
Perfect. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
So you're going to utilize Zaca Creek. I'm having trouble visualizing.
Okay, well, let's.
Is this going to be like San Luis Obispo uses their, their creek as it runs through part of their shops and restaurants?
So perhaps we may want to invite the applicant up to make a presentation, and then they can answer any questions that the planning commission may have of them for that.
For the applicant.
It's not a hearing, you can just.
Oh, okay, okay. We would like to invite the applicant up to make further comments.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Daphne Romani. I'm the architect for the project, and I'll give you a little background on how we came about most of the decisions, so it might give you a little bit more insight. So if you don't mind, I might read some of these, because I took my D notes. First of all, thank you for your time in reviewing this project, and we're really looking forward to working with staff and the planning department to make this a successful project. As you have gathered from the presentation, we're planning to use one restaurant and eight retail spaces that we're envisioning mostly will be used as tasting rooms. So given that it is centrally located, it is really ideal for pedestrian access, and it's meant to create a social gathering space for both locals and visitors alike, which will offer ample outdoor seating and onsite parking. Unfortunately, it is a very challenging site due to its irregular shape, and as the planner has indicated, there's the, we have the creek to the south, and then we have the floodplain to deal with, as well as a very odd property line shape in adjacency with the Highway 246 road right-of-way. The current layout of the site has been reached after a long and meticulous evaluation of multiple iterations. So the current site layout doesn't really lend itself to much latitude in adding a ten-foot buffer. Indeed, we can provide ten-foot screening, you know, between the parking and the creek. However, if we were to move the edge of the south part of the parking, which is pretty much in alignment with the top of bank, and I apologize for missing that delineation more clearly, but if we were to move that, it would highly impact the project, and most likely it would kill the whole project because of basically the reduction in the amount of spaces that are required for parking. In regards to the finished floor elevation, we're envisioning a project that can be accessed from both street side and rear parking area. From an urban standpoint, the buildings that offer street-level entrances result in more functional spaces as well as present a better curb appeal. To that end, we had our engineers run the high-water calculation in the hopes that it could define a lower floor elevation, so it could be maybe six inches or at the most a foot above the sidewalk elevation. But unfortunately, we've been told that we've been communicated that we won't. So the project might, you know, as we proceed to move forward, we'll see, will be impacted, and a sidewalk access wouldn't be direct. There would be some ramps required, and that would definitely affect the aesthetic of In regards to architecture, at the time of art deco and art modern, also known as streamlined modern, when they came about, they were the forward-thinking movement of the time, often experimenting with newly available materials of the day, and often offering a futuristic and minimalist manifestation in its architecture. In this case, we're trying to offer our best interpretation of the style leaning more towards the futuristic and avant-garde expression of art deco in the minimalism and streamlined modern architecture. And we feel that we have achieved that in its architectural expression. There are two documents to be consulted when developing an overall design, and those are the Avenue of Flags specific plan, as well as the built-in design guidelines. And they don't necessarily match a hundred percent, but if you can show the slide of the building that I sent you yesterday?
Okay.
I feel that some of the comments given in relation to the massing have been overlaid onto the art deco style, when their intent was really to be applied to the architectural styles that are actually outlined in the design guidelines, which are specifically agrarian, mission revival, ranch, and contemporary ranch.
Does, I have it on the screen here, and it's not on the.
Yeah, well, because it's, you want to move it over?
No.
You can just move this window over to the next screen.
I know.
Which slide is it?
No, I don't think that's, oh, you, hey, all right. Perfect, thank you.
So as you can see in this, in this slide, it shows a prime example of streamlined modern with long facade bearing strong horizontal accents, repetition, and symmetry, something that on a much smaller scale we're offering on the project. And I don't know if you, if you could show the rendering that I did? So the first slide of yours?
Okay, so.
Or maybe, oh, it's going to override.
It's probably going to override this at this point, so.
But I don't think that the first slide doesn't have, like, it has kind of, this one has those bump outs, you know, per floor.
Yeah.
The, this rendering does not, correct?
Correct, but it does have a surface in, in, this design is, still hasn't been developed fully in its details, so they were not included in this package as they haven't been fully developed. But the vision is to have recessed grooves in the, so the horizontal elements that you see on the facade are actually three-dimensional, that it's not surface completely flush.
How does the?
Can I finish it? In addition, the guidelines also call for reducing the perceived scale of the building, which, these buildings in themselves, they're really not that massive. They're quite human scale in a way, and we're not presenting large blank surfaces. What we're offering is surfaces that are softened by the use of doors. So this is actually the wording from the design guidelines, that surfaces, there are large surfaces, they should be softened by the use of doors, windows, avariance in color and materials, and also the addition of trellises. And these are all elements that we have included. So we're not presenting, you know, a single mass facade. It has symmetry, repetition, horizontal material changes, and horizontal, strong horizontal elements. So I feel that we, in that regards, we have accomplished that. Let me see if I can.
All right, so I'm not getting the PowerPoint back on. I don't think we're going to be able to flip through this.
She's moving the cursor there.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, but then you put this, that was the first slide?
Yeah. I don't think we're going to be able to flip through this.
So where is that slideshow?
Well, that's what we're, okay.
So as you can see, this, from this rendering, there are strong horizontal elements, and there are, there is symmetry, there is repetition, and there are doors and windows. They're all elements that, they're not leaving a blank facade. So at this point, I'm asking the commissioners to just keep an open mind that perhaps this may already be compliant with the art deco design, and of course, I will work with the architect in regards to finalizing the design.
I think I'm going to be one of those commissioners. I have an open mind, but I am really going to stress the art deco part of it, and to, and along with our architecture view, because, you know, this is our thing with the specific plan, and we really want to see the art deco features.
Yeah, well, they, they say that the art deco was actually, it is already art deco. That's what the comment by the architect says.
Yeah.
So, but also the specific plan adopted, it adopted art deco and art modern. So perhaps you may have not been aware that that's, you know, another side of.
It's primarily art deco, isn't it?
It states both.
Okay. The final specific plan?
It's primarily art deco. There were some examples of diner-type styling included in there, which had rounded corners, but the comments from the city's architects stress the need for detailing that is, they're asking for additional detailing to be shown in articulation.
So in regards to colors, the only comments in regards to colors that are pertaining in the specific plan is states no pastel colors, which it's something that, it's a bit surprising considering that the, you know, the city wants art deco. But in the design guidelines, it's highly stressed to use neutral and earth-tone colors. Now, on the other side, the owner really does not like white stucco structures, so this was, so this was the best attempt at finding something that could suit both situations.
And then you can see the right side. You need to see that, and not this, because that does not give you the art deco effect. That looks like.
Since we're looking at this too, I was wondering, is this section in here, are those, is that glass block?
Yes. No, it's not glass block. It's steel windows.
That's another function of the art.
And then the other, the other comment was in regards to light fixtures. I did select an art deco style fixture. Again, there was a little bit of a conflict in regards to night compliant sky, you know, dark sky fixtures versus art deco, and they don't really agree, because the night skies specifically direct lighting down, and they don't really accept horizontal wide projecting light fixtures, which is what the art deco lighting. So in an attempt to be on the safe side, I ended up eliminating the light fixture that was selected, and I sent you that yesterday as well.
Yeah, and so we can work through that, I think, rather than try and pull that up.
Okay.
It was more appropriate, so what we're mainly concerned about is the lighting, which is not dark sky. is not dark sky compliant.
We didn't have uplighting, yeah.
Right, so, but I'm saying, you know, other types of Art Deco styling is, you know, certainly appropriate.
Okay, so I'll let the word for the, to the landscape architect, and I'll come back for a short...
Would you like me to forward to the...
Yes, please. They were excellent.
Thank you very much. Members of commission, my name is Bethany Clef. I'm a landscape architect. I'm sorry, there was a little confusion about some of the elements on the plan. I do applaud Ms. Tucker. You're excellent with, it's very specific, makes it very easy to just kind of go down and do exactly what I did, which is, okay, gotta address this, gotta address this, you know, makes it very nice. Very, very well put together. The, according to, the Zaka Creek Top of Bank, there is some information amongst the plans where site plan, the civil plan and all that, yeah, they don't agree, and that's really a big no-no. But it's often an occurrence at this stage, when you're just trying to get everybody on the same page. And as we move forward, I'm sure we will get all of our ducks neatly in a row, and things will start to comply. We have talked about bicycle racks. They're not shown, because we haven't gotten down to that nitty-gritty, the actual specificity of that, but we look forward to showing them on the next iteration. As far as the tree removals, this plan is correct. I have identified the actual butter trees and trudy trees. There was a miscommunication, and some things got labeled as trees that aren't, so this is the correct number of removals. What I had done, because this is a very preliminary landscape plan, I did not attempt to provide symbols for all the plant material on the site at this point. What I wanted to do was convey the fact that we did understand that we need to screen the parking, that there needs to be a certain number of trees, those kinds of things, that we're addressing some of, you know, heat and parking lots and shade and those kinds of things. And so that's why this plan has a preliminary plant list, and it only shows some symbols along the areas where we're screening between different uses or different properties. Okay? So the white green areas that are shown up there are intended to convey that would be material most likely on the list that was submitted, okay? And all of these plants are moderate to low water-using, some of them are very low. The intention, my intention is, especially along the creek corridor, to choose things that are native and more riparian in habitat. It will work great for, you know, any kind of a buffer that we need to do. I know we need to sit down and talk about where exactly all those things need to happen, and how that would impact the current proposal, but as far as a buffer, that's not a problem. And in fact, we would like to do something like that. We're gonna have to, we've started to talk to Fish and Game, haven't really talked to anybody who has any direct decision-making at this point, but we've started the conversation, and so we're gonna be working with them closely. I used to live in Rancho de Maria, and we worked with Fish and Game, so I have worked with them before, so I understand Zaka Creek in there. To your question, sir, about how we intended to use that corridor, this is not intended to be a use where we're trying to...
I was thinking the wavy part up there, wasn't that in Zaka?
Yeah, no, and, and in fact, the intent is actually not to do a restoration plan. That's not an apple that we want to take a bite out of at this point. We're not prepared to do so and to really do it well. So what we would like to do is utilize that buffer, maintain visual access, if you will, to the creek, because it is an amenity. However, we don't want to encourage people to go down in there. We don't want to encourage them to go down and dump things or any of that kind of stuff. So what we'd really like to do is to actually promote some kind of stewardship. And to that end, given the constraints, there probably wouldn't even be room for a pedestrian path, which is in keeping with kind of preserving that area and not inviting traffic through it, pedestrian or otherwise. I didn't have, I have the MRELLO calculations, the MRELLO calculations are up there, and I know you found them, Ms. Tucker, because you used my square foot takeoff. The statement of compliance is not on there. I will get that on the plan. The trees, I do call out each tree, each symbol has an identifier. I agree, it's a little hard to find, and that'll start to, it would be much easier as we move forward. We have Quercus agroforia, which is coastal live oak, and that's primarily along the east property line, and then along the creek, paralleling the parking. There is a huge number of existing oaks which are identified with their diameter at breast height, which will be maintained. Then up at this, could I use your pointer?
Absolutely. That little...
That little, thank you, ma'am. Right here, I have some olives, which are on the list. These are Arbutus marina, along the 246 and along this throat of the access. Those are also on your list, so it's coastal live oak. The Quercus suber, which is the cork oak, right here, that is more in keeping with the idea that this is gonna be potentially a tasting room, and it'd be kind of cool to have some cork oaks. They do do well here, and they're not water-high-use intensive, and I have, I can provide information on that. The only other thing shown here is, this is a desert willow, Cholobus linirus, and it's a very low-water-using plant. It's not gonna be a big tall skyscraper. The root zone will fit in those tiny little planters that I have. So my expectation is that it could actually be successful in a parking lot. So often, we are overly optimistic, I feel, and we put trees in, and there's no root zone. And you might as well just write a check and throw it out to the nearest passerby, because you're not doing anything worthwhile at that point. That's my belief. So those are the trees, there's a quarter line listed, and it's not really a tree. I think Mr. Blakdike would agree with me. So I'll get that, let's see, lighting, I've already been talking with Daphne and the client about the lighting. I'd like to see our lighting be 3,000 Kelvin or less. That's a really good Kelvin level, light level, it looks good on people. It also isn't as harmful to fauna, and it makes the floor look good. So it's kind of a happy, nice locus. As far as hardscape calculations, I'm assuming you're requesting takeoffs, you know, areas of the different hardscape? Okay. And just so I can clarify, the only ones, this area here, and then these areas directly associated with the building, those would be the only areas where there would be any type of permanent. And I don't know how, where the square foot takeoff was, you arrived with your 63,000, so we'll need to get together and make sure that it's, everything's hunky-dory there. One last question that arose was this little trailer. Because we are looking at flying flags, and we're not looking at, you know, lots of trailers, it's actually a very nice intermediary, it actually becomes a distant view. And one of the things that I wanted to do was kind of to create a connection, a visual connection to the, to flying flags, and people would say, well, that's kind of stupid. Well, it really isn't, because what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to make the community hang together. I'm trying to look at this holistically. And so my idea is this, was to be a little folly, a storage shed, by any other name, basically. There's nobody gonna be living in it, they're not gonna be selling something out of it. It's not a business, okay? It's just a folly. We could keep the bocce equipment in there, okay? So that's basically the thought process. I don't know if it'll survive cost engineering, value engineering, and all the rest of it, but as just a little folly that creates a really endemic view of Buellton, because flying flags is a major organization and business, you know, I mean, people know what it is. And it'd be nice to just kind of borrow that. So that's where I was going with that.
Is that what that little pathway is over that we talked about earlier?
Okay, this pathway, sorry, that was the last item.
That played in there?
That pathway was requested by Flying Flags.
Okay.
Which is why it's there. So that, they, we had a direct request to the owner that we provide access, and, and he said, great, we'll do it. And that's why it's on there. No need to look at the grading plans, but I did, I looked at the grading plans. There shouldn't be any issues with getting that maintaining accessibility, so it should be an accessible path. There shouldn't be any, any, you know, grading, ups and downs, it's not a big huge thing. We can make a little curb cut there, it's fine. So that was, that's the idea there with that. And that's a nice little cute little oak right there. So it'll hopefully get larger and, and kind of anchor that corner. Okay? And I think that covers it for me. So I'm gonna hand you that back.
Commissioner Blakdike, do you want to start down there? Do you have questions for staff or the applicant or the landscaper?
I thought the landscape plan looked really, really good. And by the way, I know that you said that, I'm sorry, the planning department says that some of the trees and plants are not on the list, and they should be, because everything is just fine.
I wasn't gonna say that.
If they're not on the list now, they should be on the list, because everything, everything works, including the desert willows and the cork oaks, to maintain the theme of the, of the area. And then I noticed over the trellises, you wanted to put the grapes or wisteria and, or hops, which is seasonal though.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, but, yeah, hops too, depending on what you have in there. I mean, we don't know that winery's gonna go in there. Could be a brewery, could be a olive tasting room, or hopefully a New York delicatessen. No, geez.
It's not bad.
Yeah. And the only other things I, I, and I'm glad that she explained to us what the trailer was, because that I had no clue on, looking at all the information here. I had no idea what the trailer idea was. I think it's a good idea, if you can afford to put it in, of course. On the west side of the property, it needs a good barrier, because looking from, I went there today to look, and I'm looking at the backside of Ellen's, and it looked horrible. It needs to be blocked really, really well. You may need more trees or a higher wall or something, especially, especially on the southwest side.
Yes, and, and that actually is one of the bullet points that Ms. Tucker had in her report, and she was talking about, it needs to be explained. Right now, there is a low block retaining wall slightly between, yeah, between that, it's actually running east and west roughly.
Right.
In the parking area.
The grade's gonna go up about two feet or so?
Yes, there's some, there's gonna be some grading and that kind of thing, and as we move forward and start to pull those plans together, and we know what grading is doing, and, you know, everybody's kind of all together, then that, that area, yes, I agree, needs a buffer, and it needs, it needs a lot of screening.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does. And the only other question I have is, I mean, and this feels bad, because I was on the bocce league and everything, but, you know, the value of putting a bocce court in, I know that Figaro Mountain Brewery, they put one in, and they took it out three years later, four years later, five years later, I forgot, but they ended up taking it out. It wasn't making them any money for, for the amount of square footage it took up. Is there something else you can do with that area?
Batty cages.
Batty cages? I'm thinking, I'm thinking some fire pits, some more seating, just...
You need to be talking Carol Pearson.
Yeah, no, I don't know, but, yeah, anyway.
Okay.
And then I'd rather see another tree block in it or something, you know, where the, where the bocce court is now. So it's a lot of maintenance, a DG bocce court.
Yes, it is.
Tons of maintenance, so you gotta look at how much work that's gonna be to take care of that.
Yep, and whether it makes pencils out, and, and...
And quite frankly, that is something that may also get value engineered as we move through the next step.
Or you could put it in now and take it out later, I don't know, but, yeah. Fire pits. I want to come out and visit you in the evening.
So one more, one more comment in regards to the, the comment that Bethany made in regards to the square footage of the permanent seating. That obviously affects the parking count, so I think the effective permanent seating is, would, would bring the required parking down a little bit. And in regards to that, currently, Ellen's is renting some parking spaces, and the idea is that some parking spaces would still be rented from Ellen for their patrons. So that's something, I don't know, perhaps during the process, we should work through that.
That needs to be clarified to ensure that your project has adequate parking.
Yes, and if that turns out to not be suitable for that, then it just depends on how much space, spaces we have. And in regards to the auto lot on the corner, the initial idea was to maintain the, the existing use of the used car sales. However, perhaps working with the staff, we might be able to find a existing non-conforming exemption to maintain it, or it's been historically used, I don't know. Maybe there's something we can work through that and analyze as we move forward, but...
We will work through that during the subsequent process, but we need to clearly understand what your intent is. You need to show it on the map, and a used car sales is not an allowed use under the specific plan, so somehow you need to either create a separate lot for it and not, you know, that would be split off if that use would be considered, it, the way that it's sho, it's not shown right now, so that, that's why we asked for clarification, and...
How many vehicles does that fit?
I'm not sure, I haven't counted there.
I know a lot of them.
Yeah.
A lot. Yes, it's double parked in many ways.
It doesn't have to meet the parking requirements.
So this is the parcel we're talking about. It is a part of this project application, although it's not shown as such currently.
Could that exist as a separate parcel?
They would have to do, they would have to do a parcel map.
But then the use might still not be allowed, so, okay, so we'll work through it. Anyway, we're ready to work with the planning department. Thank you for your time and review. We're looking forward to make this a successful project, and hopefully have it, have it become an epicenter for social life in Buellton. So thank you.
Thank you.
And if you have any further questions, I'll be here.
Do you have some questions?
Yeah, great plan, by the way. Just a couple of questions, more for staff. The staff requests for vertical elements in the buildings. I don't see how that fits in with a horizontal streamline, so is there, how set are we on that? And I don't even, I don't even know what that looks like.
Well, this was a comment that was made by our, our city contract architect, asking for accentuated vertical elements, and possibly looking at some additional elements to be put in there. So these are items that we'd like to sit down with the applicant to talk about, to see if they can be...
Just suggestions.
Suggestion, and, and really, the specific plan does ask for greater variation in the facades, but they do, this plan does allow room for evaluating specialty buildings on certain sites. So this could be considered a specialty site area, and I think Opportunity Site 10 was actually described as having, the potential of having some specialty structures on it. So, you know, we will take a look at that, but there is potential for them to put some more vertical elements on there and still keep...
But it's not, it's very vertical.
It is, but also the Art Modern Streamline styling, there are examples that can be looked at to show some more vertical elements that, that fall within these flowing lines that they have shown.
And just one other question, how, how much of the creek are they responsible for? Because that's, it's a disaster zone right now. When I read the phrase, you know, views of the creek, I thought, okay, you know...
So part of that will, will be answered as they go through the process of meeting and coordinating with Department of Fish and Game, yeah, Fish and Wildlife, I think it is now, to review the plans, to see what their, they... the plans to see what they're, they will be requesting. Part of it also will be, they'll need to plot the top of bank, which is an engineering exercise to begin with. And then they will need to conform to the setback requirements and to provide buffers, whether or not a trail would fit in there. We have examples of what has been provided in other parts of town on developments that above the creek, that they typically would not be able to build right to the top of bank. So parking would need to be buffered and screened and separated.
Is anyone currently maintaining the creek, or is it just there?
It's just, it's there.
It's just there. And it's obvious that people are living, have lived down there, and they're dumping garbage in there. And it's...
That's not good for businesses.
No. It's going to require some kind of stewardship. So, I mean, people will have to step up to help this.
Private individuals?
Private individuals, clubs, whatever.
We can't make a request to the city to say, "Hey, send someone down there?"
I don't think so. How much you want to bet?
I don't count.
And also, also, they'd ask, we'll ask them to do it. They'd have to get permission from Fish and Game and...
Okay.
How many entities?
The city of Lompoke has a huge effort to clean up the river on the north side of Lompoke. And the city of Buellton might consider doing such to this creek here. Will there be a wall between the parking lot and that, and the creek of some sort? Are you talking about buffer zones or whatever?
There is a grade change, so there would be a little bit of a retaining, but it might be a very low step, basically, down into the creek at this time.
All right. Can I ask a question about that, too? A low step, or are you going to be building up the side of the creek?
No, no, no building up. Just keeping the elevation, basically, to where the top of bank is, and...
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And the staff mentioning the transition between the property and Ellen's, I'm assuming that's mostly landscaping. Is that right?
Yes. This would be, at this point here, it butts right directly to the recreation area and the landscape patio. And this right here is where Ellen's has their grease button, their trash containers, actually, right out here. So thus, we would be recommending a wall, a wall to be built here.
Right where your light is pointing, right where Ellen's abuts the property line, that's a two-story building. Is that permitted, or?
What, what is a two-story building?
I'm sorry. Right, right where it butts the property, right there above it. That's a two-story building right there.
There's a two-story.
It was an ad hoc second story.
Yeah. Is that a legal addition?
I can look into that. But it can go to the...
It is a problem for the neighbors.
But there would need to be a wall erected to separate those two uses.
When you say wall, are you saying it has to be some sort of masonry or other types of construction, or is it some kind of a solid fence also? Because we have a fence proposed right now.
I don't think, I saw a five-foot fence on there.
So we saw a five-foot fence up here. Wasn't clear what is recommended down here. And as I walk the property, there's absolutely nothing except the chain link fence separating Ellen's currently. So we need to work through what that's going to look like to effectively screen, not only the views, but any odors. I mean, I think you'd want to have adequate separation between the, I mean, this is going to be a dining patio here, and just to make sure that there aren't any unpleasant conflicts going on there.
Right. You also show a straight line right there, but Ellen's has a bump out that bumps out three, three feet or so into their property. And I don't know if that's encroachment or whatever.
They'll need to address that.
How well does bamboo do in Buellton?
It needs tons of water.
Okay.
Otherwise, great.
Last but not least, we have a speaker slip. Ms. Brierton, would you like to come up?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, and welcome to our new ones. That's great to have you. Peggy Brierton, I live here in Buellton. And I have three main things, some that you've touched on. But the number one item that I'd like to speak of is a placement of building number two that is angled due to the easements and, you know, property right-of-ways. It doesn't work. You know, I think it's important that they build to what the lot, lot constraints are. It looks like it's jammed in there. It's awkward. Driving down, trying to picture, driving down 246 or coming. If the other building on the opposite side of it were angled too, to make it kind of an entrance coming in, that could work. But it looks like it's just being forced in there. It's squeezed in there. I think it needs to change. That's my, my number one gripe. My number two gripe, or concern, I should say, because there's a lot about this project that I like. I'm happy to see that something's coming. This has been a mess. So the area that's not being developed on that west end, that with a row of trees right next to the restaurant, I think down the road, that's going to be a nightmare for Buellton's planning. It's going to be landlocked, first of all. So how is it going to be accessed? Is it going to stay a used car lot being rented there in forever? What if this developer wants to develop that location? Then what does that do to impact parking? How is that going to be accessed? It's landlocked by this drawing. So would it behoove the developer to create some kind of maybe access, underground access at the point where they can, when they think about what they may want to do with that in the future, I don't know what they're planning, that maybe they can get there? They do have some extra parking spaces that I guess were mentioned about as being rented out to Mother Hubbard's or to Ellen's. I think that's a mistake personally. I think this project needs to be geared, this parking needs to be geared for what this project is. I think that's imperative. But that could be some extra parking then for some development on that piece of property. I don't know what their long-term plan is. And I think we need to know. I think it's a serious concern. Now, the other area is architectural design, which we've talked, you guys have talked pretty much about it. I don't mind the streamline. I just don't think it fits here. I mean, that's the bottom line. And in fact, it was mentioned, visual connection, when the little trailer was talked about, the visual connection. There's no visual connection to Anderson's across the way. You have streets that are, streets that mean something, that are special. You know, you have to, successful streets have imagery to them. They have a sense and a feel to them. When you have such a disparity between Anderson's on one side, very ornate pub, and the stained glass windows and everything else that go along with Anderson's, and the peaks and this and that. And then you have the streamlined box, which looks, in this respect, looks most like a, you know, a business, you know, area, you know, where you can have business. It doesn't look commercial. You know, I don't mind it, but it's just not in this location. Those are my concerns. I think, I say less streamlined, more deco. And I do, I agree with Roma that there are examples out there that do combined it, that could possibly work.
Do you mean like more cubist?
Well...
Earlier art deco?
Yeah. Well, that would be...
Or neat.
Yeah. Well, there's designs, geometric designs and things like that. But I'm talking about using not just the curves, but vertical elements to it. You can do that. Sharp edges versus curved together, you know, more recessed things. But it's possible. I really do think something more can be done to have it blend in with Anderson's across the way. I really think that that's critical. It's not going to look like Anderson's. And Anderson's may change over time as well. But the general gist of that building will not change, probably. We can figure it won't. So the visual connection is important. It really, truly is. Parking needs for this project only. I would say, Buellton Heights, did the Buellton Heights apartments do anything, do any creek restoration? Did they have to do creek restoration? With that 62 apartments at Buellton Heights?
I'm not certain of the extent to which they did actual creek restoration. I know they did do plantings along the creek, and they did provide a buffer area. They did provide a pedestrian pathway that's part of the city's...
Trail system.
Pedestrian and bikeway master plan. So this area actually is shown as a potential for the pedestrian path to continue, but there are other constraints that made it not maybe, perhaps not the most ideal, part of which is crossing Highway 246. So there's a lot of access, alternate access that's existing here. But nonetheless, some buffering along the creek is something that would be required at this location.
Yeah. And I'm not so much concerned about the buffering, but the creek itself, the restoration. And it seems to me that Hume's had to do something. I don't know how much or how extensive, but something. Anyways, so I kind of like apples for apples. I mean, when one, you know, developer has to do something, and this is along our trail and master plan, it should have a pathway for that. And, yeah, we're not going to jet across 246, go to the light and walk around. I think that the pathway along the creek or in this area somewhere needs to be included. It's in our master plan. So it should be there. Let's see, let me take just a real quick look. I thought the creek was county-controlled, and that's part of the problem, is, because we've tried to get it cleaned out by our business there.
Well, we actually are the flood control agency in this area. So not the counties, but there are agencies that would also have a say-so in terms of how that takes place.
Very good. Here, I'm glad to hear about the lighting, that level of lighting. And just one last comment about the trailer. I thought, jeez, that's kind of, I get the connection thing. I think that's important, actually. And I thought, wouldn't that be cool if they could use that trailer for like a visitors' bureau depot, so that you can go and get information instead of going to the other end? There's going to be a lot of people here. Use that as a little kiosk for visitors' bureau information. Just a thought. Anyways, I think that's it. There is one town in New Zealand, Napiar, New Zealand, and it is art deco, new, kind of new art deco. And I would recommend, you know, the commission, the applicants, take a look at that for ideas as to how to blend and fit things in. I think it's a good example of a town that does that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you, Peggy.
With that, any further comments, questions, Commissioners?
Just one thing. Is there anything illegal about both parties, Ellen's, and having just an informal agreement on shared parking?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The parking issue and the renting of, you know, could they just have an informal agreement that, "Hey, you guys can park over here. I can park over there."
Distance over, I wouldn't go for that idea.
The project needs to demonstrate that they have adequate parking for their project. And to the extent that there's a, you know, potential X number of spaces leased out to Ellen's, that would be a monitoring problem as well. How do you, you know, monitor that and enforce that? So...
But they're not required to put signage up saying, "Hey, this is our parking lot. Get out."
That's a, that's a private matter in terms of how they, they set up their parking situation. But if they have certain areas that they, that they're present to lease out to Ellen's, then they would have to demonstrate and clearly set those aside. And in this case, because parking is such a premium in this area, you know, the point has, has been made that it would be advisable to have just this project parked and not have, you know, agreements for off-site, I mean, parking for additional adjacent uses.
Okay. Thank you.
Was that Napiar, New Zealand, N-A-P-I-A?
Yeah.
Hmm.
I-E-R.
It's N-A-P-I-E-R.
Okay. To wrap it up, thank you to staff for an outstanding presentation and a lot of detail. Thank you to the applicant. I think this is a, congratulations, because it's a great opportunity to really upgrade and, you know, present as you're coming into the heart of Buellton. Great opportunity to upgrade that area, and you're well on your way. I don't, do I take a vote on this, or are we just...
Just adjourned.
Okay. We continue to encourage you to keep on that art deco part. I said I'm going to stress that on all projects. And again, congratulations, and you'll be working more with Roma and staff. And nothing else. We already did everything else. Meeting adjourned at 7:30 PM.